I'd like to call this evening's meeting to order. Our regular council meeting here for the December fourteenth. If we could, to tell our us with plaudits of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome Village Attorney this evening, Mr. McCain. I'd like to move forward with the approval of tonight's agenda.
Mr. President, if I may, can we add a real-time law concerning stamping of the agenda, please?
No, sir, Mr. Vick, we cannot. I'm looking for someone to make a motion here.
I make a motion that we accept the approval of the agenda we presented. It's dated December fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Horton.
Yes.
McCafferty.
Yeah.
Maury.
Yes.
Vick.
No.
Baldwin.
Yes. The Parks and Recreation Plan, the public hearing, there's no.
Katie Vick, Green Road. I have quite a few concerns about the Parks and Rec Master Plan that you're looking to adopt. One of my questions is, why are we ignoring the master plan that hasn't been updated since two thousand and eight, but fast-tracking the Parks and Rec Plan where there's only, the only significant change is a two million dollar dam project between this master plan and the last one? I'd also like to know who or exactly at what public meeting was it determined to drop that two million dollar dam project into the master plan? Because all records I see indicate no decision to add it. It was only discussed once we were given a document that included it. And that's a concern to me because we were never given the previous Parks and Rec Plan to work off of, so most of the people that were involved in this discussion had no idea that that was something new being dropped in. And I believe that's, that just sounds pretty shady, and I have the question of what the intent of that was. I'd also like to know how we can include the dam into a Parks and Rec Plan when we are refusing to discuss it. You essentially are under a dam, a GAB order over it. The current Parks and Rec Plan online is not there. When I click under Master Plans, it lists Parks and Rec Plan from two thousand and fourteen, and I don't recall anybody passing a Parks and Rec Plan from two thousand and fourteen. So that old plan is not even available to the public. I'm getting very suspicious as to why nobody's talking about the major differences between the last one and the new one, especially when the only difference is a two million dollar dam project that we're not allowed to talk about in any way, shape, or form. I feel like we should've had some sort of a open house for the community. A lot of other communities do this, where they have, you know, a span of several hours where the community can drop in, give their ideas, you know, to make comments about things. I don't really feel like this hearing is a sufficient way of collecting data to adjust the master plan. I feel like we kind of skipped that step at the beginning of it all. And also, there's a lot of things that I, I don't feel like we're ever discussing. Even though I am a representative and I did approve the vote for moving this to the council, I feel like we weren't given a proper directive from the council as a committee. I was under the impression our duty was to plan properly. I feel like the committee itself feels more like they're a volunteer service deciding which project they want to work on next. I would like the council to please clarify that so that the committee can work more unified. But there's a lot of things I think were missed in the plan. No mention of the Ironbell Trail. Nothing really about non-motorized capital improvements. No further discussion about parking, which we all know is a major problem by the elementary school. Nothing about amphitheater options, open lawn areas for fairs, and the signage situation. I mean, there's a pretty long list. Safe routes to schools. We should've been seeking more input from the county Parks and Rec. They, they can do wonders for us in assisting us in doing this properly. There's also a Genesee County Regional Trail Plan that I believe we should've been working with. Oh, and we're also about to pass a Parks and Rec Master Plan. On the, on the way it's listed on the agenda, if you decide to pass it, the very next item is easements, which will basically obliterate right through the center of the park. We should be discussing that in our Parks and Rec Plan and how we're going to repair those tennis courts, how we're going to repair our park before we just gunk home, pass a plan that makes no mention of all the disaster we're about to create. So, and I believe that is it for now, but I'm sure I have more. Thank you.
I myself would like to know why there was, there's been no discussion whatsoever on the dam and the drain. There's been a gag order. Yet, you want to shove this on the Parks and Rec, a two million dollar, over a two million dollar project. Am I correct? And I think I get it. You haven't talked one thing about any park or rec, or you haven't talked anything about the drain, because you got a GAB order. And now you want to shove this through and incorporate it in the Parks and Rec. Again, I'd like to know who made that decision. I've been to all the meetings. You never talk about it. So who, who made that decision? I think it only involves people that live on that pond. I don't think it pertains to anybody that doesn't live on that pond. All of us that don't live on that pond, you want us to pay for it? According to this paper here, Goodrich Commons Park, where it says it's going to be over two million dollars, it's to be funded by grants, general fund, and special millage. Special system. That's all of us. You want all of us to pay for it, and yet there's been no discussion about dismantling it? You don't want to put all the cards on the table. You just want to put the ones on there that are going to benefit a few that live on it. I also think it's, it's a conflict of interest. Because there's people on this council that have parents that live on that pond, Rick Horton's parents live on that pond, Shannon McCafferty, I believe you guys-
Please direct the chair and leave names of-
Okay. And you yourself live on the golf course, who is irrigated by that pond. I believe there's a big conflict of interest. And why there's not any forums, there's no talk to the public about any of this, there hasn't been.
And we're going to pay for it.
But we're going to be paying for it. That's all I've got to say.
Mr. Baldwin, may I speak whole more time? Yeah. Public hearing. I, sorry, I forgot to mention, I actually have a possible solution or a way to compromise this to still be able to proceed with the master plan, but change it so that it makes everybody happy. I would suggest that we change the wording on it to say, instead of saying, "This is the project we want to see get done," instead change it to, "We're still working on it." You know, a proper study of the dam shall be conducted to properly assess the pros and cons, along with the related expenses and with the community's input, so that the village can make a proper determination on how to proceed. Pursuing grants for the study as well as sediment testing is very important to this project. And there, I feel if we keep the wording the way it is in there, we could be jeopardizing our chance at funding assistance the way it is now. Because there is grant money and funding available to get our sediment tested and to get the study conducted. And I have contact information for, for agencies that are willing to help us with that. If you would like to reach out to me, I'll be happy to share that. But I think it's very important that we handle this carefully, or else we could put back ourselves into a corner by saying, "This is what we want to pursue," is it the end replacement, knowing it's been stated by several individuals, including our own administrator, that the funding is not generally available for replacement, it's only available for removal. So I think we would be jeopardizing that opportunity for the removal of funding by not even pursuing it. I'm not saying that's the route to go. I'm just saying we need to do the process steps before we decide to keep it or remove it. Thank you.
Mr. Baldwin, I really want to emphasize, I hope you're listening to the public, because understandably, you don't have your entire community here, but I do know that this is on YouTube, the people do watch it, and I strongly suggest that you address the concerns that we have. Because this whole issue of incorporating the dam in this master plan, I'd like to know, and the rest of the people in the public that's going to watch this video, want to know, when did we incorporate the dam into a master, a Park and Rec Master Plan? When was that ever done? Do you have that answer? I, I'm asking you.
You know how, what their, how the procedure goes. Go ahead and talk.
You never answer us. That's the procedure. You don't come back with any answers.
You know the procedure.
No answer. No answer.
Open dialogue.
Okay. Here's the point. On that Park and Rec Committee, and it's public, it's on the, it's, it's on the website, your committee members that are on there are, are, and are speaking directly to you, Shannon McCafferty, Ida Searoly, that's Richard Searoly's wife, and he's the one that published that fact-finder. Rick Horton, I'm telling you, he's, his parents live on it. Shannon's parent, mother, mother lives on there.
You can mention those that are on there, but that's as far as I'm aware.
But it is, but it is a conflict of interest. Don't you find the, don't you find it very, I mean, I'm not, I'm not assuming anything, I, because you never come up with any answers. But don't you find that this is a problem, this is problematic, with this being a part, with them being a part of it? All the time that Mr. Searoly and you were on that council before the November two thousand and fourteen election, Mr. Baldwin, you talked about the sediment, you talked about contamination, you talked about anything that pertained to that dam. You put roadblocks up like there was no tomorrow, but now you can incorporate it in a Park and Rec Plan? That's disturbing. These people, this public needs to know that you're going to, you're going to fund that with general fund and a special millage? That's a private milk pond. You don't find that to be a problem?
I can imagine it.
You know, the people have to get a little bit more wiser, and they have to be more investigated. They have to be their own FBI, I guess, so to speak. But the bottom line is here, that the people here need to vote on this. There should be a referendum on a ballot if it pertains to replacing that dam. Everybody in this community should have a right to vote on that. And I'll be the first to, to tell you that that will happen as long as I'm still living here. It is not going to pass through this council without a vote to the public. Because it is wrong that you're running this through without any knowledge, and if you haven't done your own homework, shame on you.
Counsel, I guess anything we're going to have to say is we can kind of chew on it until we get down to new business.
Yeah, close the public hearing.
Pardon?
Close the public hearing.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment, if I may, please. My name is Doc Peterman. I'm at Clark Street. And I use one little time I'm going to give you is, under the turner, I would, I'm going to ask everybody in this room to go home and figure out what they are getting for their tax dollar. That's all I'm going to ask, is to go home and figure out what you are getting. Thank you.
Yeah, good job, Mr. Peterman. Good job.
Order, please.
Fantastic.
All right, anyone else? Close the Park and Rec Plan, I'll be carrying part of it now. And I guess we'll go right into the approval of minutes for our regular council meeting November the ninth, two thousand and fifteen.
Make a motion with through the minutes, November ninth, two thousand and fifteen.
Support. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Horton.
Yes.
McCafferty.
Yeah.
Maury.
Yes.
Vick.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Just a quick question, I'm sorry. I didn't see this as we approved the agenda, but I'm seeing regular council meetings for November ninth and a special council meeting for November ninth. Is there only one? Who we need to?
We have the personnel committee.
I didn't, I didn't see him like that, that's all I'm saying.
Should be.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I have one, you don't have it. It might be on the back of the page.
I think that was the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth is on the back of the page.
Okay, thank you. Well, sit down.
Yes, sir.
All right. Special counsel, meeting November fourth, two thousand and fifteen. Looking for a motion, please.
Make a motion with through the minutes for November fourth, two thousand and fifteen.
Support.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Horton.
Yes.
McCafferty.
Yeah.
Maury.
Yes.
Vick.
Yes.
Yes. And then we have the special one for November the ninth. I'll be to the fourth, November ninth.
I make a motion with special council meeting for November ninth, two thousand and fifteen.
Support. Any else? Roll call, please.
Horton.
Yes.
McCafferty.
Yeah.
Maury.
Yes.
Vick.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
We have the special one, was it the twenty-fourth? Is that what I'm done to? Yes. That's on the back of the last one, November ninth one.
Make a motion with support, or ask for meeting for November ninth, twenty-fourth.
Looking for support?
Support.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Horton.
Yes.
McCafferty.
Yeah.
Maury.
Yes.
Vick.
Yes.
Yes. Treasurers' report.
Make a motion with September fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, Treasury's report.
I'll support that. Roll call, please.
Horton.
Yes.
McCafferty.
Yeah.
Maury.
Yes.
Vick.
No.
Baldwin.
Yes.
The bills and transfer. Looking for a motion to support the bills and transfer.
I'll make that motion.
Support. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Horton.
Yes.
McCafferty.
Yeah.
Maury.
Yes.
Vick.
Yes.
Baldwin. Public comment for tonight's meeting. Once again, the first time here, this is on agenda items only, please, please address the chair.
Hello, Mr. Baldwin, Teresa Allen. For months, I have asked, and I asked you off-record on camera last month, about the code of conduct for elected officials and about the appointed officials, about having them removed and what we need to go through to have them removed if need be. The other issue I have is, I also mentioned three months ago, and again, last month to you, off-record, about the minutes on our website. They have not been updated since August tenth. And all the copies that are online now are still the draft copies. I know everyone's been busy. I've been busy myself. I've been setting the depositions every day, but I still manage to get my job done. So I don't understand what the problem is, if somebody needs to be trained or what, but I think we should probably check into that. This is a governmental website, should be updated. And my last question on the agenda item number ten, it says personal policy? Is that a type of, is it just for one person, or is this a personnel policy?
Personnel.
Okay, great, thank you.
Patricia Wortella, I'm addressing two items that are listed on the agenda. Under your meeting minutes of November the ninth, Mr. Baldwin, I addressed you, and you still haven't come back with any answer for me. I stated and asked, within the personnel policy, if the theft of hard drives were going to be addressed for both employees and elected officials. I haven't received any answer to that, and you've got this on your agenda. And again, you have code of conduct for elected official on number eight, and number, number ten, you've got personnel policy. Is that going to be addressed in this policy? Because we don't want the same thing happening that happened with Mr. Horton and Mrs. Sitch, so, you know, regarding the hard drive. So I truly think that we need to address it. Is that going to be on the, is that going to be in the policy? Because I know when this happened, it was stated that there should've been a policy written regarding this, that there should've been a policy in place for ramifications and for what would happen to the employee that was involved and the elected official. So I'm asking you as president, is this part of that policy? And are we going to incorporate that? I waited for your answer, that was last month, and again, you haven't come up with any answer again.
Katie Vick, my concern is about the DPW worker. You have it on the agenda. I'm assuming that's about hiring a third DPW worker since the last one had resigned. Might I suggest that instead of just replacing the last one, when I think it was pretty clear to the entire community that it made no difference around the community as far as the way the community looked, maybe the job should be switched to a part DPW employee and part, I don't know if I'd say shift manager, or some sort of duty manager who's capable of implementing the proper systems, so that job tickets can be recorded properly, and there's a proper paper trail, so that you can end the conflict between the community and the workers of our village. There's, you know, I think a lot of people that have any sort of jobs where they have to drive around in a vehicle and stop and do a job, they have to do job ticket and turn those in, and you're, you know, when you're judged at the end of the year, the words escaped in me, but you know, at the end of the year, when you're assessed on how your job performance has been, that should be something you can reflect on. And I also have to question how you've been doing that, how you've been following up on employee assessments year to year. I'm guessing there's probably no paper trail on that as well. But anyways, back to the employee itself, I feel like the job should be a little bit of an office staff, department job, as well as a field work, and it should be a gardener. The same person should also be the gardener. There's no reason to hire a fourth person as a gardener. They have no ability to water our plants. Our DPW has the watering truck. They are the only people that we can count on to properly water our plants. And we're paying for the plants. Why are we counting on a volunteer service to water them and manage them? That should be a part of the Department of Public Works, and even though you say it's not now, I, I really think you should reassess and reevaluate the way that we have the jobs distributed. I think that would really benefit the community. Thank you.
I'd like to touch on the DPW, too. My name is Henry Wortella. I know we're going to be talking about it, and maybe at the end of discussion under council comment, if you would touch base and just let us know, what is it they've been doing for the last two months, seeing as how we haven't had any snow? And it would be wise, I guess, to have maybe three or four doing nothing, as to having three. I don't know. It's the way it seems to go. And I thought I warned you about that when you hired the, the third one, or somebody hired him, I don't know who did it. Because I believe council had the, voted on that, I never remember seeing. But if you'd just enlighten me on what they've been doing, because I haven't seen them do anything. Thank you.
Unfinished business, the Goodrich Senior Living Center. Gentlemen, invited all this time, please.
I am Emery Gunna. Have lived in the area for over sixty years, and had a lot of interest in the area, was in business in the area for many years. And at this time, I would like to introduce John G. Emery. We've been working on a senior affordable housing for many years, and finally it's getting closer, it looks closer. I'd like to have him come up and give you a quick presentation on that.
Good evening, counsel. Thank you, Emery. Appreciate that. I have a little clip for everybody. We are proposing to do a fifty-two units, affordable. There's a cord there, watch out. Swear I haven't been drinking yet either. It's coffee.
It's coffee?
Yeah. Thank you. You're welcome. Would be a fifty-two unit affordable senior housing with a mixed blend of eighty-two bedroom units. Typically more one-bedroom units, because we know, as you get, the, the need, what we see in the market today is more for one-bedrooms, but we're proposing to do twelve, just in case you don't sleep in the same room anymore, or, you know, you, you know, just needs a little bit of extra space. How we plan on funding the project is through low-income housing tax credits through MISTHA that will allow us to fund most of the development project. There will be a small gap, but I will be reaching out to both the USDA and to the county of Genesee to see if we can fill that gap. If we cannot, then we can also hold permanent debt. Typically, there's usually a fifteen to twenty percent gap in these type of projects. It would be new construction. We're proposing to do it on six acres that my group that I represent on, it's on Hell, Hell Road and M-15, am I right?
Heagle.
Heagle, sorry.
Your ghost, John, your ghost.
Yeah. Heagle Road and M-15. It would be a new construction project, and of course, we would like your input as far as the community, and we're, we're pretty much just in design phase now. The group I represent is, there's four partners. One is Dick Mazur, who's a very accomplished developer in the city of, in the metro Detroit area. Another one of the members is a former senator, Senator Matt Danaskis. Another member is Greg Bellhague, and then Jay Parks. We have our development team already worked out. It's in the- It's in the binder. We have our architect, we have our contractor, so on and so on. We have actually modeled what the rents would look like, and I've placed that in there. The city of Goodrich, when you go on the HUD website, the affordable rents in Genesee County are very low. We can only get, if you look, can I borrow you real quick then? So, if you go back to the form here, the rents we're proposing are 30% AMI, would be five units. We're only allowed to get $305 per, for rents for that. What that allows is it allows, you know, for a senior that's on a fixed income to have quality, safe, affordable, clean housing. We have a professional management company that will manage it, Premier Property Management, they're very big. They're also listed in there. And we have to use a MISHDA-approved property manager. MISHDA really monitors these things as they fund them. They're, they're pretty strict on who we use, because we have to be compliant to them on a yearly basis, because we're actually going to partner with an equity investor that's going to physically buy our credits, and they get their allocation every year from MISHDA. And if we default on who we say we're running to, then they lose their credits and they come after us all and want more, basically. So, we, we're very excited about the project. Our plan is to go in in April. There's two funding rounds, April and October. Our plan is to go in in October. We would definitely be looking to the Village of Goodrich for municipal support. It's very crucial in the application process to get a score that, you know, have your support. We wanted to make you familiar with the project. Like Henry said, it's been a passion of his to have an affordable senior housing project in the community. We are designing it to donate a community center or a senior center to the village, right? So, there will be a piece of it that the, that the village will actually own and be able to utilize for the seniors in the community, a place for them to gather, whether they live in the, in the complex or not. So, they'll have different functions, everything they want to do. God, I hate saying this, but bingo, because you know, bingo's popular, but, you know, other things, meals, you know, card games, yoga, whatever incorporates. And that could come out in your community letter, however you guys, you know, see that advertising goes. So, we're very excited about the project. We would like to, you know, talk further, and I will be bugging all of you throughout this process, so that's kind of why I wanted to put my suit on tonight and introduce myself. So, because we're, as we get closer in January, this thing's really going to pick up speed. We're really going to be moving forward and getting the application done. Right now, we're in the process of getting a final ALTA survey. We're getting a Phase 1 environmental. Our architect's going to be finishing his design. We're ordering a MISHDA market study. There's a significant cost to the developer upfront to even submit this application. So, we're in the process of doing all our due diligence for MISHDA. We're going to start talking to the different funding sources, being USDA and County of Genesee. So, this thing is going to start really moving forward. So, I just wanted to introduce who I am. My group could not be here tonight, so I am representing my group, but I'm sure you will get the opportunity to meet every one of the partners that are going to be involved.
If I could, John, first of all, you know, where's this going to be located? You know, there might be some questions as far as where you're going to build this. Maybe you only want to show, you know, some of this to those that are here?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's actually, so, right behind, right off of M-15, there's six vacant acres behind the bank, behind Chase, so that would be like the northern border, and then, how do you see the road?
Eagle.
Eagle Road. Eagle Road is the other border. And then, I actually have a survey, an old survey, but it's like 22-years-old, so I'm trying to get an updated ALTA survey to better show it. But it's actually all vacant land that has been purchased by the group, the Methodist Church. Am I right? Did the Methodist Church?
Methodist Church originally had.
It was purchased from the Methodist Church originally to do the project seven years ago? Was it seven years ago you guys started this? So, they started it seven years ago, and, you know, with the economic downturn, it kind of put a halt on everything. The developers froze. I met Senators Danaskis, actually, at a Governor Schneider fundraiser. We touched base, he asked what I did, I said, "This is what I do." He said, "Well, I got a project," and we started it. So, but I can show everybody a survey, and I believe it's going to be published in the paper. So, Henry already has a waiting list of about 35 people.
Forty-two.
Forty-two people that actually left deposits and want to move in. So, which is good for the funding source that shows it. So, but I can make that available. I just didn't have the survey as well, to actually show you the physical property. The one I had, I wouldn't show off to anybody.
Council, do you have any questions?
Yeah, John, if that fills up, or do you plan on doing this, I could tell you.
There is a Phase 2, yes, we are, we are contemplating.
There'd be another 52-unit?
Yeah, it would actually model it. So, the first 52 would go on the front, and the next 52 would go on the back. And then, the community center that I spoke of, and the cafeteria, and the gathering community room for the complex would be in the center. So, and that's actually exactly how it's going to look on the front without the third floor. It's only going to be the two floors, but that's one that has already been built, so it's going to have the same facade, same design without the third floor, same entry, everything.
Anyone have any questions? Please feel free.
I do. So, maybe you could explain when you, when you included in your presentation that you were looking to the village for support?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not exactly clear what you mean by that.
So, support would be municipal support in a letter.
Which would be?
It's a letter stating that we support your project and we welcome your project. As we get into numbers, we may need a tax abatement.
That was my next question. And so, in, in return for the village's support, does the village get anything in return? I mean, are you totally just not going to pay?
The village gets a 52-unit affordable senior housing project, plus a senior community center.
I understand.
Yeah.
And I'm just asking, you're asking for something, I'm just wondering if there's anything, if there's like this return policy, as far as that, if there's going to be any expectation as far as them having to approve tax money in line of what you're asking for in support?
It's not them approving tax money, it's them just basically freezing the tax abatement where it's at.
So, is this a not, complete nonprofit endeavor?
It is.
It is? So, nobody's profiting from it?
Well, yeah, the developer profits. Why would he build it if he didn't profit? Do you work for free?
So, the developer's going to profit off of the money that you're getting through the grant programs to give us housing for the old people?
For the seniors.
Okay.
Let's use the proper term. And it is, yes, they are profiting, but they also got to lay out about 70 grand to get to that, to get to that money. So, there is some risk.
And so, they lay out 70 grand, so where's, so when you were like, when you were telling us about all of these departments, or whatever you want to call them, like the MISHDA and all that, so, are you getting funds from them, too?
From who?
Well?
MISHDA.
MISHDA?
Mhm.
Yeah.
MISHDA, USDA.
You're getting funds from them and whoever else?
Mhm.
And then?
It's not actually money that we're getting from MISHDA, it's actually tax credits. It's credits that you take and then you sell on the open market.
And I, I completely think that that's a great thing sometimes, except we're getting, the tax credits are actually not a benefit for very many people anymore.
But you're not, it's not what you think. You're totally off-base. It's not tax.
Well, then, convince me.
It's actually, so, they give me, they give me $1 million in tax credits.
Which is our money.
Which is not your money.
It has to come from somewhere.
But it's issued by HUD. They issue 70, but they issue $70 million a year to the state of Michigan.
And where's the $70 million come from? The state of Michigan pays.
Okay, so either Goodrich gets it or Flint gets it.
I think it's awesome if we get it, but I have a problem with somebody profiting off of it, because they're getting money to do it.
Okay.
It's just my personal thing.
So, nobody's allowed to make a living?
No, it's not, it's beyond that.
I mean, honestly, it is, that's what it is. The guy's putting up $70,000. He's building a project in your community that's going to allow.
So, why do you need the money from all those other people? Why do you need money from MISHDA or whoever it is?
Because, did you hear what the rents were? For a one-bedroom apartment, I'm going to get $305 a month.
And that won't cover the cost?
No.
Of the apartment?
Mm-mm. And that includes all utilities, so the senior's not going to have to pay gas, lights, all they're going to have to pay is cable.
All I would be happy to know is that if, if the village is asked to contribute anything over and above what all of us taxpayers are contributing out of our Michigan State taxes, that that would be a huge consideration.
I had something you could bring up to MISHDA. I mean, this is a MISHDA, it's a MISHDA program.
As long as you're not asking to look for a relief build.
I think we're missing the point about, these residents that we have, they're on the waiting list. Now, wait a second, you have 42 people on a waiting list, okay? These people are our residents and have paid taxes in the village forever. How is their rent based? Talk to me about that.
So, the rent is based 20% of what their gross monthly income is, is what they have to.
See, we're going to come in front of you. Yeah, right, okay, thank you.
So, if they make $1,000 a month, they only have to pay $200.
I think that's awesome.
So, it's clean.
So, it's those that have paid taxes for a lot of years are getting a benefit. We're taking care of our seniors.
We're assuming that, but whatever.
Well, there's no assumption, that's pretty much the way it's going to work, you know? It's how the funding works, the government makes sure that's how it works.
Mm-hmm.
It's all monitored very closely.
And we are restricted on the profit we make. It's actually been approved through MISHDA and through HUD, what the developer gets.
Oh, I'm not questioning, I'm not saying that I don't believe that.
It's very intranspirant. The, the construction costs are capped. If we go too high, we lose points, we don't get the project. You know, we have a Section 3 clause that we have to employ members of Goodrich, right? So, 30% of the employees that work on this project will be from the Village of Goodrich and Atlas Township. So, we'll bring jobs to the community?
30%.
30%, right, 30%. So, typically, we exceed that, right? Because we got to use trades, we got to use HVAC guys, electric, are there any HVAC guys in the room? Any electricians? Carpenters? Okay, so that's, typically, what we're going to do is we just have a GC. He's going to manage the project, but we're going to put it out for bid. Everybody in the Village of Goodrich gets a shot at that, right? So, why wouldn't we use the HVAC guy from the Village of Goodrich? First of all, he's only going to drive 10 minutes to work. Why wouldn't we use a local electrician? I mean, if Henry was still in business, I would definitely use Henry, because he's probably the most out of the sky ever I've met in my life. You know, I mean, he's been in business for 60 years here. But we will put it out for bid to people in the community. It's a requirement by HUD and by MISHDA, right? So.
To put it out for bid.
For putting, well, we have to hire 30% of the contract, has to be from the community. Spitey fit, right, yeah.
Would you do us a favor and give us a definition of what an abatement means?
So, a tax abatement, right now, the taxes are $1,000 a year on the property, right? Tax abatement, basically, it's a pilot, payment and move taxes. It basically freezes that, freezes the liability of the taxes for a period of time.
And usually, what is that?
Typically, we need it for about 15 years, because that's our affordability restriction, right? To, because we have to pledge to MISHDA that we're going to keep this project at a certain income of, like, we can't just turn it into market rate after year five. We're, I mean, there is no money that's going to come into operating income. If you look at the numbers that we came, on an annual basis, the developer makes nothing compared to what he, if he did a market rate job. That's why it gets paid upfront. So, for the next 30 years, because even though we're tied into MISHDA for 15, we have to keep it as an affordable senior housing project for 30. And if we need more points, we may elect bump that up to 45, right? Because that'll get us more points for the application to receive the funding. It's a very, very competitive process.
So, have you already been assured that you're going to receive this abatement?
Nope, there is no assurance. You have to, it's competitive, so we have to fill out an application, and you score it, right? So, when I ask for the community's support, community's support is five points on the application. So, that just gets us five points. The highest score you can get is 125. So, that comes through cost containment. How much is your, how much is your hard cost? We got to keep our hard costs low, because if we go over $173 per square foot, that's all in with all soft costs and everything, we start to lose points. We lose points, we don't get the allocation.
How many sewer units are you going to absorb with the 52-unit?
Don't know that yet. That would be in our engineered plan. So, we need to finalize our conceptual, then we can start talking to Mr. Maury about how much sewer we're going to need, how much water retention we're going to need, right? Because that's a big thing.
You're going to have to have a well for that.
Are we?
Yes.
Okay.
One other thing you have to put in there, you're going to, the fire department's going to want a well there for fire protection.
Sure, sure.
They have one over there behind the condo association.
Yeah.
The town chairman of.
Have you been to the township? We have not.
We are going next Monday night.
Yeah, next Monday night, we're on your agenda. So, we just kind of wanted to introduce ourselves and say, this is who we are, this is what we're doing.
Do you know when you'd be coming to the village for planning purposes?
Probably late January. I would have a complete package by then.
Of the year?
Yes, yeah, next month, so.
So, this is, this is independent senior living? And then, you made mention of a cafeteria. Is there, is there going to be dining available to the residents, or is that just more part of like the community rooms?
We haven't worked that out yet, because one, MISHDA will pay for a cafeteria, we just got to figure out how we fund it, right? How does it, because the rents are so low on the project, there's no, there's no operating capital to fund that. So, if we can come up with a funding source to provide meals, we could do that. So, that would be kind of as we map this thing out and get further, deeper into the project. But as of how we're setting it up right now, there will be a community room with a small kitchenette for them to do like a warming station, not like a full-fledged kitchen.
Right.
So, for like hot looks and, you know, because, I mean, let's face it, seniors know how to cook.
Well, yeah, I want to be like that. They came to a grocery store. We don't have a grocery store.
Oh, really?
Really? You don't know that?
At the Dollar General.
We don't have sidewalks in there, either.
Okay.
There'll be other things that we'll have to look into, whether sidewalks, roads, even there's a.
Public transportation, I mean, there's transit that we can offer twice a week to the grocery store, to the Walmart, to, you know, different things. I mean, we're going to be definitely in the rural set aside category of MISHDA, right? So, they do have rural dollars for rural communities that do these type of projects, right? It's just a growing trend right now, is, you know, baby boomers are all retiring, and they, a lot of them, you know, the 401Ks took a tank in, you know, '08, housing values took a tank, they're really relying on social security. I know my mom personally relies on social security, and we tried to get her into an affordable senior housing unit. Anything that was decent was like a three-year waiting list. Anything that wasn't decent, she could get right in, but, you know, there's only so many spots, you stick your mouth, and I love her, so.
I think it's a project that the Village of Goodrich is going to accept very well. There's a number of elderly people that live in this area. Over the years, there's a number of them that sold their homes and moved to condos in Davidson, for example. And those are people that have lived there maybe most their life, but at the same time, dollar signs do things. Sell the house next to us, go into a condo, and you're going to be in a suburban metro area that Goodrich is. So, your concept, I think, of being well-taken amongst the public to live here, so it's a great idea.
Thank you, sir.
Make it work, and he'll be great.
I appreciate that. I will, that's kind of what I do, I think it works.
Any other questions? Please feel free. If anybody wants to sign up on the waiting list, Henry's taking deposits.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much, thanks, Senator.
Next on the list is the Genesee County Sheriff's Department Report, in favor of one. Questions? No discussion, let's move on to number three, the Street Administrator's.
The only thing I really have is, right now, is, Proofless Street will be closed Wednesday through Friday, no through traffic, locals will be able to get in. They're picking that drain up back there. That drainhead belongs to Genesee County Drain Commission. It's broke, and they had to have bit it out because it's down there somewhere between It's broke, and they had to have bit it out because it's down there somewhere between twenty and twenty-two feet. They don't have the equipment to get down there to get it. So. Supposed to go work on it starting Wednesday morning, and they hope to be done Friday afternoon.
Was it a hole on, on the old street?
Rules are rules.
It's on, no, it's on Curfley Street. Down about front where Mrs. West used to live.
Thank you, Emery.
Okay.
Thanks, Emery.
Thank you.
For all said on that, let's go to nine eleven. Water and Waste. Parks and Rucks.
They're not meeting till January, but they did meet. Like I mentioned, last time approved the Parks and Rucks to come to council for approval.
Anything on code enforcement?
No.
Administrative.
In your packet, I gave you some information, just so you would have an idea with the new bill that the people in Lansing passed. If you look at Goodrich, it just tells you how much extra active demand money we'll be giving for the next five years, which is as. Just wanted you to be aware of how that, how that process went and what we're looking at, so that we can do a little more roadwork or whatever. It averages. There's an average, it goes from twenty-nine, a extra a year, to eighty-three in two thousand and twenty-one. Providing that I'm trying to understand anything you're good. So it's substantial. And I gave you the whole county, so you know where we stand with everybody else.
Any questions on that?
Just real quick, we'll prepare the patient, Jackie. So the first year, someone twenty-nine thousand, and then are we gonna get the next year thirty-eight thousand, or it's gonna get added?
Gonna get added to. The original number is what we get now, and then they're gonna add thirty-eight to it, and then they're gonna add twenty-nine to it, and they're gonna add.
And then forty-nine, and then whatnot, okay.
All said and done. Sidewalks, please. Mr. McKinney.
Good evening. Just a couple of comments that I think are in direct relation to the next topic, the Code of Conduct. I had an inquiry to my office, and I'm gonna generally respond to that. The question of whether this is enforceable with penalties is a question of policy for the council. And there is a provision in the code, in the village charter for removal of a council member, but it's for very specific grounds. And you have to be cautious about removal, because there can be no removal of any public official in violation of that official's due process rights, so you might be very careful about. Sanctions that include removal, typically, I've seen censure. And maybe that's, maybe that's perceived by some people as a slap on the wrist, but it is not removal for sure. But it is an official disciplinary action. All the action is taken by the council. It's all within the jurisdiction of the council members. And the procedure would be before the council. The council could adopt rules or procedure if it felt necessary to do that. And then determine the procedure for receiving complaints and acting upon complaints. Whether there'd be some preliminary decision, whether the complaint is worthy or not, could be incorporated into those rules. There's a question about an investigation and what point it becomes subject to the Freedom of Information Act. It's the standard rule. Any meeting of a public body, which is a quorum, is under the jurisdiction of the Open Meetings Act. And that information is public. Any report that's received at a public meeting is subject to disclosure under the Freedom of Information Act. There's a question about prosecuting elected officials in court. You're not adopting criminal ordinance. So no, it is not prosecuted. This is strictly the village council taking care of its own business amongst own membership. Can, can ethical rules be extended to employees? Employees of the village serve at the pleasure of the council, so you don't need, you don't need ethical rules. You can discharge any employee for any reason, essentially, as long as it's not an illegal reason. And that's a big distinction. But the employees serve at the pleasure of the council. Certainly, you could have employees who are employed, when they're employed. You could incorporate with their contract ethical standards, any employee. Then the other, the other questions in the balance of the email that I got are basically policy decisions for your discussion and your determination. There could be no criminal penalties. It's not, it's not a criminal ordinance, so there can be no criminal penalties. Can there be penalties? I believe there can be penalties. Will they dissuade potential employees? Yes, of course, that's a possibility to dissuade good employees from wanting to expose themselves to not just being prosecuted, but being suspected of something was unethical. But that's not a reason not to have ethical, ethical standards for your, for your elected officials. Whether you have the political will to adopt an ordinance with serious sanctions, that's up to you. But once again, I don't think you have to adopt an ordinance. You can adopt ethical rules for council members. But you can't prosecute in the court unless you adopt a criminal ordinance. And then, of course, if you prosecute somebody criminally, they don't have to answer your questions. They have the same rights as any criminal defendant. And I think you're looking more for interaction here, not for criminal enforcement, but for ethical enforcement. And not for criminal penalty, obviously.
Can you touch on the, removing people from committees appointing?
Those persons serve at the pleasure of the council, and they can be removed for, typically, they're removed for not doing their job, which is not showing up for the most part. Yes, they can be removed on those grounds. If it's for non-doformance, yeah. It's not for, yeah. I don't know, I don't know what malfeasance. If you're coming to the meetings, and even if you're cantankerous, you're, there's not malfeasance. That's our system. So it would have to be for non-feasance, not doing your job, not voting, not showing up. It's, it's subjective to say someone's not prepared. We all prepare differently for meetings and discussions, so it has to be, I think it's, you almost have to hang your hat on the fact that the person's appointed and they're not showing up. And I've seen private bodies say, if you miss three regular meetings without excuse, then they will take steps to have you removed from a private body. Certainly, if you're not showing up as a ZVA member or planning commission member, that's grounds for removal. Unexcused answers. Any questions, Councilman?
Are you going to the township or are you asking questions?
No, I'm not. Do you have a question?
I do, if I may. If I heard you correctly, you said the, the body of this council would be the body who determines if a misconduct or something like that took place?
Well, typically, that's the case, yeah.
That this would be the non-biased committee? And I'm asking that, I'm not trying to be.
What do you mean, unbiased committee?
Well, that's, that's what I was asking the email. How do we get a non-biased committee in here? Because if, if council here, and I'm not pointing any fingers, gentlemen, I'm just showing you as an example, were to have an issue with one individual, it'd be easy to gain up on one individual if that council wanted just to make a point. That's what I was asking. How can you have a code of, a code of conduct and not have, and having a non-biased committee if the council is the committee?
I'm not familiar with a code of conduct that's enforced by an independent third party. It'd be, it'd be, I don't know who would do that. I don't know who, you have to gauge somebody professionally to do that. Typically, the council runs its own house, and if there's sanctions to be measured, there's censure. Censure is always an act of a legislator body. Is everyone unbiased? No, no. But the procedure should be, should be absolutely fair. It has to be fair. By law, it has to be fair. That's what due process is. So you would hope there wouldn't be a railroading, that there would be, there would be facts marshaled before the, before the council. And there would be a decision based upon the facts, what was done, that reached a written standard.
Okay, but then, but then on that, with penalties or whatnot, that may occur. Could you give an example of, of a penalty or, I don't know?
Well, in the, in the charter, there's a, there's a penalty for removal, which is, you can have no more severe penalty, I don't believe, but there's a penalty for removal.
Right, but I'm guessing, what, what kind of violation would occur if someone would be removed?
Well. In the, in the charter, it's, it's not voting when you're supposed to vote. You can be removed for that. That's a, that's a violation.
Is that a segue into another topic?
No, it's not.
Okay.
No, it's not.
All right, just wanted to make sure.
That's just an example of a rule that, that the punishment is stated in the charter, removal. But my experience is that typically with ethical issues, it's censure. It's censure. It seems to me that public bodies should share the court's reluctance to remove elected officials. They are elected after all. I've seen officials who didn't qualify for office, and the courts have upheld them not being seated because they were in violation of standards for office, written standards for office. But the standards were clear, unambiguous, and the violation's clear and unambiguous. If you don't have your taxes paid to the municipality, you cannot be, you cannot be sworn into office. And they determined that the candidate who was elected was, was not qualified, and he was not seated. But typically, that's not the case. Typically, it's a censure.
Council, we good?
We're good.
Number eight is the Code of Conduct for elected officials. Mrs. Suj, do you want to touch on that with where you're at with that?
Um, I'm sorry to.
We can't hear, we can't hear her.
We can't hear you.
We can't hear because you're talking on the phone.
I'm not even talking.
Order, please.
That was nasty.
That is, she is nasty.
This is what we're talking about. Then do something, Bob.
I talked to MML, and they're giving a price to combine parliamentary procedures with the next ethics program, about a three-hour training, and that would be about seven hundred dollars plus travel expenses. If you wanted it longer than that, it'd probably be around a thousand dollars. I didn't pursue anything at this point until after the first of the year. If you want that set up, we can set it up, or if we wanna look at some of the other options, she could do another combination.
Discussion?
Can you say what the class is again, please, one more time?
Parliamentary procedure and ethics.
My phone. What? Use your mic, please.
I'd be, I'd be in favor of the class. I mean, as long as everybody's gonna take it, I mean.
Yeah, it would be open to zoning board, appeals, planning commission, to, there are many of our boards that we have.
So it doesn't matter how many we have, it's just seven hundred dollars a pop?
Yeah, the size of the group that we would have.
Okay. Is there a maximum, minimum number that you need to have the class?
No, whatever you wanna pay. Seven hundred dollars if two people show up.
Okay.
If you want me to, I can go ahead and set it up for, the historical society doesn't meet in the winter, so the first Monday of the month is, the room's usually available. Do it like first Monday of February. If you have an interest in it. Or I can try to do some other combinations.
Is that after Super Bowl Sunday? That's a no doubt.
Should I ask your line?
Yeah, probably.
Jackie, where would this be held?
Here.
Okay, yeah, someone come in and give the class.
You wanna see what you can do and then see how many we can get from planning commission and, oh, wherever we can get.
Can you throw us a couple of dates? Maybe not necessarily on Monday as well, if that's available?
Um, sure. What's another day of the week that work started, buddy?
Tuesday. That's for me, I'm speaking for myself.
He's playing in Super Bowl, so. Probably a wise thought, yeah.
You're not going fishing, are you?
No, I'm not going fishing.
Okay.
So is Tuesday a better day than?
Tuesday.
I just know that the room's available on Monday, that's all.
It is what it is. On Tuesday, the February sixteenth, I have that day off. I wouldn't have to take leave from work to attend if it was going to.
It would be an evening class.
Oh, it would be in the evening?
Yeah.
Yeah, Tuesday is fine.
I can check in. Get back with you.
Perfect. Number nine, the DPW part-time employee.
You wanna touch on that with your people, I guess you know what?
At this particular time, Mr. Campbell is not looking for a third person. With the weather we're having, we have employee if possible, if we can get a snowstorm to come in and do the sidewalks if needed. And it's kinda hard to teach people to do everything with this kinda weather. He says for now, if they got snowed, they would just have to put the puddle to the metal and get it done. That's the way they can. We would just like to try to see if we get by right now. The other fellow we lost was a very good man. He knew a lot, he had a lot of things to do. He said he would. This other gentleman's laid off at the moment, but he could be back to work at any time, so we'll do the best we can with what we got. The sidewalks have to go two or three days, they'll have to go two or three days. Try to get as much done as possible.
As long as we have somebody that can fill in if needed, I guess that's.
Well, we got him right now, but like I said, he's got applications out, he's in a computer business and.
What are you looking to pay another?
Well. We were paying him fourteen something when he died. You're not gonna get somebody that can do everything cheaply right now, because these guys, there's a lot of work out there. These guys will work in there. They can run drill creators, backhoes and all that. Hey, those guys wanna be employed, they're employed.
Who'd you vote on?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
You're out of order.
Who voted on that third person?
We'll try to turn the mic up a little bit.
We're not talking about the third person right now. If we need a part-time guy is what we're talking about. He won't be full-time, he'll be part-time.
Who approved that?
We're talking about it. Nobody's approved it.
You're out of order, please. If you pay attention, you might understand what the conversation is about.
I don't understand. Maybe you can explain if you're the president.
Please, you're out of order.
No, we are talking about the possibility of a part-time employee. Our DPW supervisor does not wanna hire anybody right now. We have an ex-employee who is available to fill in if necessary. Necessary.
That's what we're talking about, nobody has hired anybody, nobody has done anything, we are talking about this, and we further discussion.
Can I ask who the ex-employee is, or is that what you're asking?
No.
No. Keith, what was Keith's last name?
Doherty.
Doherty, yeah.
He worked for us, and was let go in two thousand eleven after the plant burn study, which-
And, and you're saying at that time, when he worked here, he was making fourteen an hour?
Fourteen, twenty-eight or something like that.
And he would be part-time, no benefits, I mean, do we want to even consider that? I mean, I guess my only point is, is what happens if somebody's sick, out of town, whatever, and we get dumped on? Should we have somebody that we can call? Keeping in mind that Ethan does not want to hire anyone.
How many, Pete, if I may, ask you this through the chair, uh, how many hours does it really take for us to clear a road?
Complete, uh, it depends on the snow for one thing, but to make a complete road, you've got to make four passes. Get it off, push it back, and their first, their first priority is to get the first pusher, and then go back. We've got six inches, they use it, can knock it out in about seven, eight hours. Biggest problem is, uh, time-consuming is, where you've got colicis and stuff, you've got to move the snow around, back up, move, you, you just can't, you know, you've got a big area, you've got to do something with the snow.
You can't just make it disappear.
No, and, uh, and then creates a lot of, you know, if you've got a snow that's blowing and blowing and blowing, you've got places on Red Rover, you've got to keep going back, Eagle Rover, blow across, and, um, in by the law, of course, if they put the snow fence up, which I don't think they did this year, helped a lot, but, uh, they were putting it up on their property and, um, it creates problems here or there.
And, and that's what, there are two full-time guys right now?
Yeah.
When you had three times, well, usually if you had a big event, you had three guys, when we had Keith, usually by after lunch, we put him on sidewalks at that particular time. He could go out and get them, and the way we could keep them off. The biggest problem we have with sidewalk on in fifteen is, the business is powerful. Plus, you also got the, the road commission going down there, and the sidewalks to go and, uh, the day's road to go. So, uh, and, once it sets there two or three days, it's kind of hard to move. Especially down here at the doctor's office, so I pile up four or five feet deep, you can complain about it, but if you ain't there to catch it, you at least don't do it again. To really put a time on it, it's really tough because each event is different, it's like a rainstorm, each event is different. So far, Al Nia's been pretty nice to us, but I've got a feeling when we get dumped on, it'll be another eleven or twelve inches all at one time. It's the way it looks like it's gonna be this winter, but, uh, it's feast or phantom in the snow business. I know it's true for a while. I think it was three years ago, we had all the snow, the guys were in every day for six straight weeks, so, uh, no more insulting, uh, pollen. You got a lot of wind, and you got a lot of dry snow, it's a never-ending battle. It's like the one we had the other day, they came in for three or four hours, I'm at home, I waited for it to end because it started again, and all you're doing is chasing your tail. I mean, you're, you're moving snow, but it's coming right now, it's actually cold, so, wait till it ends, we'll get it done. But, actually, if he, if he was to call this guy in, it would be just basically, perfectly doing the sidewalks, and we have some.
I mean, we're wide open, we get the limitations on it?
Well, I think, I think it's, my thought is, I mean, beginning hammering on, we need a, a third body, fine, just to get some room for safety purposes. I don't, I don't think we're prepared to disagree with that.
My concern is if somebody's sick, you know, one guy would be pretty tough, hard to fix things that are broken at the same time. With that said, you know, the fourteen dollars or whatever, fourteen fifty we're paying him for, sounds like to me he's willing to do that again, if need. And if you want to put a restriction on how many hours or-
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know if you, if you can, because, I mean, if you, if you have a dusting of snow, and, and it takes, you know, you don't, it, it's gonna take no time. If you get dumped on with, you know, six inches of snow, and then four hours later, the snow falls again, and it's another six inches of snow, and they're having to keep going out, back and forth, back and forth, that, that takes time. My, my husband plowed snow for many years, he was gone for days sometimes, plowing snow. But, I don't know that you can really put a time restriction on something, if somebody is sick, and you have them, and he, oh, my six hours are done, or my four hours are done, and then, we're gonna have, we're, you know, roads aren't gonna be cleared, sidewalks aren't gonna be cleared, and people aren't gonna be happy about that.
What, I mean, what we were looking at is, um, whatever the amount, dollar amount would be, um, leaving it to the discretion of the DPW supervisor as to when he called in. It wouldn't work a, a regular week of twenty hours or whatever, at this particular point in time, he would just come in when Ethan would call him, depending on what, what kind of snowfall or if, kind of forbidden, we have a hole in the road or something, um, it could end up being twenty hours that week, it could end up being forty hours. It depends on what's happening out there, if we get another ice storm, that takes a long time.
Right, or, like, uh, Mr. Baldwin had said, if somebody's sick, I mean, that's, that puts it down to one person, and one person-
And they plowed when they done a set before.
Plowing roads and, you know, clearing sidewalks, that's, that's no sleep and, and overtime.
They can only work twelve hours.
So, I don't know, I think restrictions being, you know, as, as needed, and if Ethan doesn't feel that we need a third person at this time, which, there isn't much snow, but there, there could be ice, there could be, anything is possible, we haven't been mentioning it.
Change tomorrow.
It, it could, it could, although I looked at my phone, it's not supposed to get cold again until the end of January, so, yes, yes, yes.
It's gonna be cold Friday, thirty-two Saturday, that's why.
Right, but that's, that's okay, cold, so. I'll live with that.
We don't need it, twenty below what we had last year.
No, no, gosh, no.
So, if I may ask, what was the fact that you did before, when we only only had DPW workers? And somebody was sick, did we just have one guy push it still?
I've never had that opportunity, never.
You've never had that problem?
They come in when they're sick, and they're close now, I mean, unless they've really got the flu or whatever.
Well, my suggestion would be to enter the council, because, I mean, again, I wasn't a favorite during pledges to hire another third DPW worker, I said, I almost, if, if Ethan's recommendation is not to have one, we leave it at that, and if something comes up, then we can readdress it.
But we have to have something in case there's an emergency, you know, like Christmas Eve, you know, you've got to have the authority to bring somebody in if need be. Like, if that emergency would arise, we, we have to set something in, in motion here so he can do that.
Emergencies or holidays?
Well, just in, just in emergency, if Ethan needs someone, we have emergency staff.
Wouldn't it be a good idea to, uh, to find a couple of guys that, that already do some of the plowing, or asked out before, and, uh, get your name, and your phone number, and tell them in case of an emergency, uh, we like to use, it might be three hours, it might be six hours, or, or, okay, you have one hour, so now I can do what we need to have done, and have two or three guys, basically, that we know that we can call, that eliminates hiring anybody, but what it does is it takes care of, we got three guys, I gave you two names right now, you guys can do this.
That's what we talked about, basically, it wasn't one particular person, although that particular person is available right now, um, but to have a, a go-to list if, if we need to.
Sure.
But, what council needs to make a determination on is what you're gonna pay them, and add the discretion of DPW.
You know, also, keep in line, they have, they have a license or an operator equipment too.
They don't go out and-
Just give me an average person.
May I make a comment, sir?
No, sir, you cannot.
Wait till the last one, I'll turn it down.
Gentlemen? I think-
Mr. Baldwin, if you have a couple of names, it'd be nice if you dropped them off to Mr. Campbell, because he only has one at the moment, so.
Okay.
And, uh, find out who they are, and they can come in and talk to him, but, we don't know what's gonna happen, I don't have, can't tell you it's gonna snow or rain, or tornadoes come.
Right, and, but, if we're, if we're gonna talk about granting Ethan authority to call somebody in, what, what constitutes an emergency? I mean, it can't just be because, you know, I want to have a, you know, I want to have this done in, in three hours.
No.
You know, if they're capable to work, you know, at, at status quo with the two, you know, just because, oh, I don't feel like shoveling sidewalks today, you know, what, what's gonna constitute it being called an emergency to call in the third person?
Right, right.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're, we're kind of leaving it at discretion of the supervisor.
Okay.
I, I guess the only other thing would be the multiple on the pin too, I don't think we can go on and on as far as, six inches, four inches, thirty mile an hour, that's telling.
Oh, winds, okay.
That's a trick, somewhat simple, and if we don't like it, we can always pull the pin and stop it too, if it should happen. Looking for somebody to pull something out of here.
I'd like to make a motion, we leave it up to the DPW supervisor, and to, uh, bring somebody in if needed, he will know when it's needed. We paid fourteen fifty last, last time, and, uh, I don't think that's a bad price for somebody working part-time.
You want to-
Hey Pete, excuse me, uh, what, a guy you get a hold of is Bobby Jenkins.
You're bringing it back to me, we got a motion, it's a-
I'm sorry.
Uh, I, I, we have a motion, uh, Pat, did you get any of that?
Um, the pay would be fourteen fifty an hour, the, um, at the discretion of the DPW supervisor, I haven't made it into a coherent sentence yet, but that is the-
We're looking for support, we're looking for support.
Do the motions made?
We have a motion?
If, if, if I could-
Next, next over the business of support.
No, I have to have support.
I was gonna amend the motion, but it's gotta be seconded before I can amend the motion.
Yes.
I'll, 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 I'll support that.
Vice President, I, uh, thank you, uh, amend the motion to, um, at least you have the oversee, along with the DPW, Ethan must call you, uh, before, uh, the emergency personnel, the person comes in to work, um, I don't think, not saying anything against Ethan by, by no measures, but, um, I think there'd be some other supervision at this.
We're talking to our administrator, is that what you're saying, have his approval?
I was referring to you yourself.
Yes.
I was gonna say, he's our administrator, he knows him, he's, you know, has all the contact information.
You don't like it, correct?
It's up to, it's up to Mr. Warrior if he wants to amend his motion, to include that.
I'll amend, I'll amend it.
All right, Pat, how are we looking now?
Point, point of information.
Whoever's seconded it has to agree to-
Yes.
I think you agree.
To amend the motion.
I don't believe that order's correct, what's the one? The motion's made, it's seconded, it gets amended, anybody can second the amendment of the motion, then you vote on the amendment, then it goes back to the original motion, then you vote on that.
Sorry, I complicated.
I didn't understand this.
The motion is made, it gets seconded, then the amendment, the motion got amended.
Yes.
That can get seconded by anybody, then you vote on the amended motion, which now becomes the original motion, and you have to vote on the original motion again.
Charles, ready?
How much should we pay him?
That was counsel's way on that one.
To include, what's your, to include calling Pete?
Yeah, I, I don't know, you want this amended, amended, so I'm gonna give me some wording, I'm not regular, you want it amended to-
Make a motion to amend the original motion to have Pete as the oversight for the emergency call process.
As oversight. Emergency call process.
Do we have to have this read back, or is everybody okay with this?
They haven't actually given it to me yet. Give me a complete motion.
She's looking for a second on the motion.
Second.
Thank you, so now I have to vote on the amendment?
Amen.
And then it goes to the original motion, you'll have the discussion again.
No call on the amendment.
Okay, um, Horton?
Yes.
McCafferty?
Yeah.
Maury?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes. Now, any, now, we have more discussion?
Yeah.
Let's keep it simple, please.
I don't want to do more amendments, I, I-
No more amendments, it's quiet, Monday night football. We're good?
We're hacking.
Yes.
All right, now we need a roll call vote on that.
There you go.
On what? Yeah, I want a complete motion, repeated to me, you've given me the amendment, you've said, we're looking to use a third person to do sidewalks, you've said that it'll be fourteen fifty, um, you said that, wait a minute, and the third person to do sidewalks, amendment to have Pete oversee this, um, person, or?
It would be the supervisor. To oversee the supervisor.
The supervisor would call me to make sure I was all right to bring him in.
That's correct.
But it wasn't just sidewalks.
Well, he, he could have to plow too, the first part of the day.
I think you understood that in the original motion, so the motion, if I'm assuming, I should agree, to, to hire a third DPW worker part-time for emergency cases, with Ethan given the okay after he goes through, at fourteen fifty.
After he calls you in. If I'm out of town, he'll have to call somebody else. And he keep calling Florida.
We are pretty good, we're pretty good.
Okay, to hire a third DPW part-time emergency person, Ethan to approve, um, calling, Ethan to approve-
A call-in, yeah.
Call-in, with direction from Pete, employee would be paid fourteen fifty per hour.
Yes.
Okay.
Very well.
Don't call?
Please.
Horton?
Yes.
McCafferty?
Yeah.
Maury?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
That, uh, that wasn't bad. Now, we're gonna move on to the personnel policy, please.
At the last meeting, um, we were talking about personnel policies, since that time, Ethan and I have met with our risk, risk management insurance company, and their recommendation is that we don't do our personnel policy revisions in-house, there are so many, um, technical terms that could be put in there incorrectly, uh, that could open us up to a lawsuit. So, I'm going to do, um, a direction of council, a little bit more research, and get some more bids, to, um, take a look at the personnel policy, and bring it back to council.
Discussion?
I just want, would those, some of the suggestions that council had provided, uh, would those be getting included in that?
If they're required by the people to take a look at the personnel policy, some things go in the personnel policy, some things don't. So, we would be taking a look at, at the whole policy to see-
I thought you had some very-
We have separate policies on certain-
Okay, so after they re, do we know a price tag, I'm sorry?
No, I'm going to, I'm going to get, I, I have two prices, but I'm going to get more, because they go from seven hundred to four thousand. because they go from seven hundred to four thousand.
So the direction is, you will go ahead and pursue that. Any other discussion on that? New business, this is resolution twenty fifteen dash sixteen, this is the park recreation plan, and before we get into this, I just want everybody to know, a living document. It's, it's funding opportunity, that's kinda what this is all about, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this can be altered and about any given point can happen.
It is not a contract. It is not an argeance. It is a master plan, always subject to amendment and modification, always.
Officer Sood, discussion council?
If I may, while we have the attorney, I, I really would like, um, an opinion from council on how we can vote on replacing a dam when there would be no discussions of the dam.
There's not a vote on replacing the dam. There's no vote on replacing the dam. Voting replacing the dam would be a bid, and it would be a contract. This is not a contract. This is a plan.
Okay. That being said, so in here, I did look at, um, where it says, uh, there has been a survey done on the dam, hashtag orange community, uh, the May first, two thousand thirteen, uh, cert, uh, study, I guess. The study that I'm seeing in here is, has three bids for replacing it. There is no pros and cons, uh, for keeping the dam or removing the dam. I'm not here to sell the remover of the dam. I think it's something they should look at, it does benefit the community. However, I do think by putting something like in this, it is handcuffing us.
It's not handcuffing you, this is subject to amendment anytime. You are not handcuffed, it is not a contract. Contract would be binding, and to get out of a contract, you either, you have to have an agreement of the parties to the contract to get out of it. There's no parties to this, it's, it's a, it's a policy statement, which is always subject to amendment. So you can, you can try and bootstrap it to something else, but it's not, it's just a plan, that's all.
It opens up funding opportunities, that's the biggest thing.
And that's a good point, and that's my concern, is there's no funding opportunities for replacing the dam. So it, to me, it's, it's a waste of ink on paper. I think to do the village justice, we should have it worded as that we are looking at all options for the dam, and we go, um, 'cause I talked with the Trout's Unlimited Department, and you can get funding up the rise zoom for getting settlement testing, for, um, getting a real study done on the pros and cons of it, and I think it should be worded as that. That's the misconception, I think that the residents are gonna get, they see a two million dollar dam project in here, I understand what you guys are saying, but if somebody goes on the website, they're gonna say, oh, look what they're gonna, what they're trying to do. That's my point. What I'm also not seeing in here is that I believe we made a pledge for safer house to school.
It's in there.
All I seen was sidewalks, so I didn't actually see that anything, and I could be wrong, I'm gonna overlook it. It may be that I don't have the amended copy.
Same type of agent. Sidewalks to school, page thirty-four. We talk about crowdfunding, we talk about map place, we talk about safe.
Perfect, thank you. And then what about the, uh, Ironbell Trail? Would that be included in here as well? I think that's something we should also have that here.
I won't swear to it, but I think it's in here. The Ironbell Trail, we can't do anything with it because it's state highway. We can't go after funds for it, but it could be added another, another time if it's not in here, I'll have to look through and see.
And, and I guess my concerns is because that, that kinda what's coming up through here right now?
Right, but it's on the state highway. We don't, we don't make applications for state highway.
Okay.
In, in Goodrich, it's on the state highway, from Green Road up to Eagle Road.
Okay.
If that's the newest version of what they're doing, and then it goes, it goes, Atlas Township has gotten some money for it, Brandon Township's gotten some money for it. I heard the other day something about going down Perry Road, but they don't know exactly where it's going.
Well, and that's what my concerns were, and that maybe it needs to be looked into a little further, but it seems like the sidewalk and one that's going all the way around Goodrich and had actually come in in two. So I didn't know if that was something we could put in here so we could be included in that.
It was supposed to be.
No, well, again, it, it changes every time they take a look at it. The Ironbell Trail, if it goes through Goodrich, will end up being pathway that we already had, but.
And then you might.
If they go up at fifteen all the way to Perry Road, then it's just gonna go through, through the village, and there's already sidewalks out there.
They'll use that six foot, five foot sidewalk for six foot, five foot, we got there, that's.
Yeah, the sidewalks that are out there are a pathway, that we got a million dollars for.
And then what about, um, since we've had our, our senior living discussion in here, I know in the original master plan, I believe there was discussion sidewalks going to it, but I'm not seeing really nothing in here.
Sidewalk's going to where? I'm sorry.
For the new, for the new senior living complex, that may or may not go, I mean, if this is a living document issue, you at least have to start with that in there?
Those are things that we can negotiate with when they come into the planning commission. The reason that the sidewalks weren't put in there was because it costs more to do, to do the engineering on it than to put sidewalks in. That was on the south side of Eagle Road, so we've looked at putting them in on the north side of Eagle Road. Until we have a plan, I don't have any documentation, I mean, sidewalks can be, can be added, can always add something. If I, if I don't find Ironbell in here, I can add that one. I'm almost positive it's in here, but I didn't read it today.
One, one more thing, if I may, I should all go back to, um, the dam project that's in here, I really don't wanna try to, um, fool the residents that there's this massive project going on, I would like to see it possibly go back either to the committee or this council make a decision, have it be worded that all options are being looked into and get some real studies done before we, you know, pursue.
You don't put those kinda things in this type of a plan. The plan that you're looking at right there, there is money available for it because it would have a fishing pier, um, it would have a kayak, I don't know if that had a kayak, launching ramp. There's money available or else it wouldn't be in there to do that type of a thing. It's not something, it'll, everything that would be in there comes to council, you guys would be voting on it, it's not, or if it were that big of a project, maybe it would go out for a referendum.
Correct.
I don't know, it's simply in there just like it is to put a park bench over on Huron, some people can sit there and look out over the, the Milton, it's not, it's not something that's carved into stone, it's just something that could possibly be, um, done in the future, but it, everything goes through council, we don't spend, we don't make grant applications unless council approves them, we don't, it's not something that's going to be done, but what you could. And as far as this special millage, um, it does not say in here that we would be doing it, it just talks about how you would go about doing it, there is a place in here that specifies that we are not looking at fees and we are not looking at a millage. And again, if I had questions ahead of time, I would be able to pinpoint that, but this is a forty-quart page document, and I, I can't.
Any other discussion?
No. No, I, I had asked, because I thought that it was, um, like, um, prior to meetings with, you know, you plan to build a house, you go to bank, you get a loan, you decide you don't want the fifth bedroom, after you get the loan, you want a library instead, you change the plan of the house, you still have, it's, you can play with it and do how you like, my, my question was answered on it, I'm, I'm good.
I'm looking for a motion.
I think a motion would pass, resolution twenty fifteen sixteen, park recreation.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Horton?
Yes.
McCafferty?
Yeah.
Maury?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Resolution twenty fifteen dash nineteen, all conversations be limited only to the easement.
Can you open her, sir?
Uh, maybe, I, I, I know that our engineering has looked at that, I'll come back to you, Mr. Vic, but maybe, Mr. Kenny, would you like to touch on this as far as a year in it?
Yeah, this, this was submitted to my office, uh, with a letter from, uh, Tennessee County Drain Commissioner's Office, and it has to do with the, uh, planned improvements to the Wheelock Watkins Drain, and, uh, things have to come together for the Drain Commissioner to proceed. Um, they don't, uh, they don't have all the access to right-of-way that they think they need, and they've asked the village for right-of-way, not, not title, no one's conveying any, titled any property, they are, however, granting what is essentially an easement for construction, maintaining, cleaning, deepening, widening, extending, toning, relocating, uh, the Wheelock Watkins Drain, this is standard language, according to Jeff Wright. I reviewed the instrument, it's a valid instrument, it's appropriate for the village to sign this in furtherance of the improvements to the Wheelock Watkins Drain. I asked if the village had its engineer review the legal descriptions, and I saw, uh, an email from the engineer, and he said the legal descriptions were accurate and appropriate for the purposes requested by the Genesee County Drain Commissioner's Office, and in the furtherance of this project, I have recommended in my letter to the council that the council adopt a resolution which was requested by the Genesee County Drain Commissioner's Office authorizing the village president to sign the release of right-of-way for the three separate grants as described in the legal description approved by your engineer. And it'll, it'll require a lot more work, um, and I think you can confirm by talking to Suzanne, uh, formerly Suzanne Cubic, Suzanne Hogan, that, uh, I don't think they're gonna do anything with this easement until the deal is, they'll hold on to it, they won't record it, and they'll turn it back over to us if, if there's any, uh, any reason, if for, for any reason, the proposed project fails, but no reason I believe that's the case now, they do have some more work to do, a lot more work to do.
Discussion council?
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. If I may, uh, and I do apologize, John, but my same question I had for the dam is, are we able to discuss this with the litigation?
We're just responding to the letter from Tennessee County, and there's not much to discuss, they've asked in furtherance of these improvements of the drain, they've asked for these right-of-way, what, what did you want to discuss?
Which, which directions this drain actually taking, is it, there's any path that's been set, and if so, who's deciding that?
The Genesee County Drain Commissioner is, is deciding the sizing and the location of the drain through its engineering services. We can tell him what we think, but it doesn't matter.
So I, I guess what I'm asking is, the easements they were going to provide, is that the path that the drain is going to?
Well, that's, obviously, that's, that's the path, that's what they're asking for.
We don't know that that's.
Right, it doesn't mean that they can't change the proposal.
We have not seen any drawings or anything, it's an option number two, or whatever she said in there. They're just getting their ducks in a row, if we're, if the drain is gonna go that way and go through the park, it cuts the price down, and they just wanna have it in hand when their engineers tell them what they're gonna do.
And are we gonna have?
Or tell everybody what they're gonna do.
And are we gonna have, um, uh, decision-making time, so to speak, on one option?
There's no decision for the village council to make, there will be a public hearing by the Drain Commissioner's Office.
Well, and if I may, they gave us five separate proposals on options to do, so you're saying those proposals mean nothing to us?
I, 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 no, I wouldn't say they mean nothing to you.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm asking, so do we, do we have a right to make a decision on which route this, this drain?
No, you, you can, you can impart your opinion to the Genesee County Drain Commissioner Office, but the village council has not been asked to do that, but you're free to do that. They've only asked the village council to authorize the village president to sign these right-of-way documents, so they have them in hand, so that it won't be an impediment when they reach their decisions about what's best for the improvements to the Wheelock Watkins Drain. They are getting their ducks in a row.
And that's what I'm asking, John, so are we gonna have the ability to look at the five engineer drawings, engineer plans, the five options that they gave us?
Who is we?
The council.
The council can look at it, but they haven't asked you for what you think about it. You're, you're free to tell them what you think about it.
Did, did you read this, this letter that came with this?
Yeah.
And you understand that, that this is a relief, and, you know, real quickly, uh, I'm gonna skip some of this, but, uh, the relief line, the proposal, the easement that they want, it could have a net savings of sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Like an alternative to.
So that was our input, to save some money if they did this. It also takes some, some water off the north side of Erie Street, and will help that drain because we're taking some of that water off and giving it a, a straight shot down through the park to the creek. There are things that we have questions about as far as what can happen and such, but that's, that's not what this is about at this point. This is just about the fact of, would, would we, if it goes this way, would we give the easement through our park?
And, and I understand, and I appreciate the discussion, and that's what I'm asking, if it, who decides if we're going to go take this route, is what I'm asking. We're given easements, I understand this project forward, so if the decision gets made, who's gonna make that decision?
I would assume that we will take the most functional, the most economical path that he proposes. But you have to understand, this is not our drain, it's the Genesee County's drain, so we have limited input. Uh, Mr. Sitch, maybe you could kinda help with, with some things, we talked about some perks, as far as, you know, can we touch on any suppose, I mean, if they go through the, the park, I mean, we talked about some perks, and she had some pretty good ideas that we could use?
Thank you.
Is, is that okay? I mean.
We, yeah. Um, and looking at where they wanna go through, if you're familiar with the park, which everybody is, I think the basketball court is at the north end of the park, what it looks like is that the easement would go through the blue section, and if it goes through the blue section, we're talking about repairing or replacing that anyway, if they go through there, they have to take the fences down, and if we have input into what goes on, we can get them to put a fence possibly, or share the cost of it, to enclose the basketball court, but it allows us the opportunity to go into the basketball court and fix the court surface. It also allows us to get that fence up, if we're gonna do something with the blue court, allows us to put a door so they don't go in the basketball court, so they don't go through. It's, to me, it was be a win-win situation because we've been talking about doing things, we can't get in there and fix it because we can't get through, there isn't an opening big enough to put this equipment in, and we've got names and addresses of companies that can go do that, but this would give us an option to be able to get in there and do that, and, um, I could say it'd be a win-win situation. While the, while the whole thing is opened up, you can go in there with as big a piece of equipment, which would probably save money as you could get, you know, you're not just cutting a hole in the fence and going through a six-foot, you're not gonna have a fence, so you should be able to go in there and, and do some of the, the items that the Parks and Rents Committee has been talking about, or the village has been talking about forever, you know, making sure that we can fix that and have that, um, basketball court and fix the tennis courts and things like that.
Some upgrades that wouldn't cost us anything, we can negotiate with them, so.
If we took out the, the blue court, um, we've talked about maybe a volleyball court, that would be a, a volleyball court, there would be a fence on one side, fence on the other side, so it's not going in four directions when you hit the volleyball. So there, there's positives to that. Obviously, you can't build something over a thirty-foot easement, a structure, your swing set there doesn't get moved. swing set there, doesn't get moved, you can put a, any other piece of equipment that is movable on there, you can't put a, a permanent structure on there. So they would probably like it if we put a volleyball court in between there instead of another hard surface. But I can't guarantee you that that's where they're going, I'm looking at this little drawing, and it looks to me like it's going through the blue section that we were going to make into a hockey, um, re, hockey, pardon, I mean, hard surface hockey play area.
Road and rank.
A non-los. But my assumption is that when they have something, they will contact the village and come to a meeting and make a presentation, but I don't know.
And what their final proposal would be?
But I don't know, I, you can make phone calls and...
Can I, can I ask a question that I kind of know the answer, but could I ask this question to Mr. Sitch about the last time she was, had talked to Susan Hogan or anybody down there, and a quick update on anything? I mean, would that be out of line to ask that? I don't think so.
That's pretty much the update. I mean, if, if you look at what they've got, this drawing, I couldn't tell you whether they're going in the direction, if you, if you, did you make a fine glass up again?
Yeah, I guess what I was tiptoe around is, I know that you've talked to them, and I know that they, the response was?
When they're ready to present it, they'll present it. I don't know, I mean, I'm interpreting what it says on there by the drawings, but I can't tell you whether or not that's what they're planning on doing with it.
There's no...
Right now, they're only concerned with getting an easement through the park. And if it lines up and goes across Clarence Street, down into the park, then they'll use that easement, like Mr. McKenna said, if they don't, then they're going to turn the easement back to us, they don't need an easement through the park, if they're not going that way. But it does save money on...
Our side.
On proposal two, or whichever proposal.
Yeah.
And it also leaves that twenty-four on the north side of the street operable, leaving a twenty-four out, putting a thirty-two in, doesn't really make a lot of sense, where you can leave them both and put a new one in. There's a lot more water goes in that twenty-four now, just coming off the school area.
But what they're asking for is an easement, and to have Mr. Baldwin sign the documents, and give them back to them as soon as possible, so that they can continue with whatever they're planning to do. So we're looking for a motion to approve this, or not approve it whichever way we go.
You talk about the resolution, that's what you're...
Yes, resolution twenty fifteen dash nineteen, the easement.
Make motion to adopt a resolution number two fifteen, two thousand fifteen dash nineteen, resolution granted to the easement right of way to the Wheelock Watkins Drain number zero two nine seven. Order.
Horton.
Yes.
McCafferty.
Yeah.
Rory.
Yes.
Dick.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Mr. Baldwin, we need to find a notary, or you to sign, or to sign the documents.
Yeah.
Can you pull stuff in there?
He should be.
Give you the original copy.
Well, so Jackie? The BSA, this is the software proposal, and Jackie, if you would, the need for this, please.
This proposal is to upgrade our software. Probably would have been doing this next year, but with the passing of the village employees, to have, to pay a portion of their insurance, we have to do it now, or else we can't use our payroll program. So looking for a motion to approve the purchase of the program.
Question, Mr. President, what is the payroll program? I'm not, I'm not too familiar with that, who are you referring to?
When Pat does payroll, and order for the charges to be...
Software.
She can answer.
It's the accounting software.
Not only updates the payroll, it updates the cash receiving.
Oh, I see, so you need this because of the new insurance money's going back and forth, basically?
We need it anyway, but now we need it out of this year's budget, which was spent, budget before instead of next year's. We just have to move it up.
I'll make a motion to approve, under new business, option number three, the BSA software proposal.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Horton.
Yes.
McCafferty.
Yeah.
Rory.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Last one is the DPW garage door opener. You, Jackie, so you want to talk to us about why we need a new garage door?
No, the opener out there, it opens a fourteen, fourteen-foot door, it's shot, and they've been opening it by hand for the last three weeks, and it's a pretty heavy door. It's the one that's opened the most. The motor and the gears are gave away, and, uh, we have two bids for them. The one for two thousand one hundred and twenty is a bigger unit, and the other one is, uh, one thousand two hundred and seventy. But it's a door that they use the most. It would be the south door in the building, the north door would be open when the five-yard or the greater goes out, the other one, everything else was out. And, you're, that's one of the fourteen-foot doors, huh? It's not really easy to open and close.
We did request additional bids, but we did not get bids for them.
I had two more people we called, but they never, too busy.
Mayor. Would it make sense to, to get one, it might cost a few more dollars.
It's got a bigger motor on it.
Bigger motor, you got a heavier door, it's just a matter of time to get this far, or one day they're buying another idea.
I think that's the second, this will be the third one on this door. The first one's gone, this one's gone, they last about five years. It's a heavy door, and they both thought about it.
What size, what size did you get on another patio?
It's, they put the resin oil in that gum, that we had the first time, which is under the twelve-hundred-dollar bid, and I think it's a one-fish. And the other one is a heavier, heavier duty. I thought we'd have one, but the two side doors are different, so we couldn't move one over there. The door, it's totally different operation. But I had it booked over there, because the side doors rarely, rarely ever get open. Don't ever remember seeing one.
Which one may you recommend, Mr. Rory?
Well, if you want to buy another one at about six years, you buy the one for twelve-hundred dollars probably, if you want to take a chance in one of the last ten years, you might save a few bucks.
Is there any warranty that comes with the more expensive one? Is there a better warranty?
Uh, probably not. It's just got a bigger motor on there that's more heavy duty. I wouldn't even want the job of taking it out there, because God, we do want to pump it.
Company I do business with is automatic garage door, I do a little bit of business with Davidson, but I, I called the guy down there, and Len told me that the three-quarter worse, and he said that it should last, you know? He said to make sure that it's not under power. So, we'll be doing another thing that our electrician could look at, make sure that we, let's back in here to do the lights, put that on the list, and make sure that it, lacking for power, they seem to think it was adequate.
We've talked about the electrician, and the chores, and so that's why we're...
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
Mr. President, you recommend this one something?
I'm just telling you what I was told, that they told me that, you know, that that should be adequate, but, you know, once again, I know that there have been numerous openers put on there. There's some electrical issues in this building, buildings, and it makes me wonder if it's lacking for some power. Those persons, he suggested going for it.
Should we have that checked before we make a motion? I mean, I just hate to spend the next a thousand dollars if it's, if there's a power issue.
You could have it put on, just tell them to leave it unplugged till they do.
You should give the public a chance to comment on it.
I assume he could come in and do that pretty easy, it's not a good deal.
They might be able, the door opener might be able to check it, uh, I might be able to get a check, but, uh, I don't know. The guy's supposed to do this. I seen him today, and he's on the slang.
I would be just really surprised if the guys from the door company would notice the electrical. They can't live though.
They got to hook it up.
They're going to plug it in.
Can I hear a motion?
Plug it.
No.
Not yet.
What, what do we think? Any more discussion?
We can't hear you.
I kind of like, I'm sorry, me, kind of thought we were talking about the twelve-seventy-one looks to be a better option.
I'm looking for a motion. Make a motion to, uh, buy Michigan overhead door loading dock, three-quarter horsepower industrial duty jack shaft, operator J dash seven-five-one-L-five for twelve-hundred-and-seventy dollars. Horton. Any discussion? Hopefully, there's no more of them.
I have one up here.
Horton.
Mr. Horton, sir? I don't, I'm going to pause, tell them I've been, no. Yes.
McCafferty.
Yeah.
Don't break that into...
Rory.
Yeah.
Dick.
Yeah.
Paul. Yes. That's it for the new business, and I think we're looking for the last call in public comments. Public comments, please.
Just a quick question, maybe, the attorney general, sir, when you guys were talking about the code of conduct, and like how you can't do this, you can't do that, blah, blah, blah. What if there is somebody who's charged with a criminal offense, there'd be grounds for being dismissed from counsel or from an appointed board?
It's not a disqualification from office.
I, I was going to say that, is there anybody else before I say anything? You, you answered that.
Yeah, I'd like to ask one question. Does a grant cost any money?
Sure, why don't you, Mr. President?
There's usually, um, depending on where the grant comes from, but there's usually like twenty percent back.
So, by voting for the Parks and Rec, did you get permission to seek a grant for this dam? Did you, did you just authorize her to seek a grant?
No, 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 no.
No, that had to come through council?
Yes.
Okay, um, God, is it to ensure that we're procedurally correct? Is that yours, Mr. Baldwin, or is it our, our office staff or your representative?
No, I have a duty of, I guess, are you going to ask more questions?
Well, my, we, our question to that is, what you guys just did with that garage door, where was the open process for us to have our input on it? We had no idea what you were about to discuss, we never heard anybody discuss seeking bids, who made that decision to go seek bids? And yet, here you are, voting on something that we never got any sort of opportunity to speak on. Maybe we had suggestions and alternative ideas that might have benefited your conversation. We were never given the opportunity to speak on that. There's also something important, I think you might have neglected to mention when you missed, basically, you missed a piece about the non-voting as grounds for removal excerpt. There's also a clause in there about the rest of the council unanimously approving or denying the ch, the decision to abstain. If you have failed to do that due process, you cannot hope, impose sanctions, or censure, or grounds for misconduct, if you didn't do your due diligence and make sure that everybody else is unanimously approved or denied the decision to abstain from voting. And I find that scary, that we have an attorney that we pay a lot of money to sit there blindly not saying anything about that. And if I am correct about this, when you, when Keith Doherty was let go, she said it was because of the plant Moran study, when they let him go, didn't we turn around and give two, two-dollar-an-hour pay increases within thirteen months apart immediately after? So the math on that would be six employees at four extra dollars an hour, we paid an extra twenty-four dollars an hour for employees after letting Keith Doherty go for fourteen dollars an hour. Then somehow we began paying Aaron, Aaron Chrisner another eighteen dollars an hour on top of that. That's why your budget keeps getting worse and worse and worse, and you never question it. I'd also like to know how many machines we have that can actually operate to remove snow? I know we have one plow and one sidewalk machine, do we have a second plow? Because if we don't, what's the purpose of having more than two employees ever? What was the purpose last year or ever? If we don't even have the equipment for to accommodate three people doing it at the same time? And don't we have some sort of routes that specify how many hours it should take to clear our village? I know the county does, they said it takes them thirty hours when we had that last snowfall to get every last bit of side street and side road cleared. We need that kind of information, or we're never going to get transparency between the community and you guys. So we need those kinds of checks and balances, so that we know we're not being taken advantage of. And then lastly, I, I feel like you failed us again with everything to do with that Parks and Rec plan. You had how many people get up and speak and bring up very valid, valid points, and to not even table it for one more meeting while you discussed it a little further was an insult, an absolute insult. I feel it was just gross negligence to proceed with the adoption of that plan after listening to these concerns. I mean, they, they were serious concerns, and you really, really did just fail us on that. You never publicly discussed adding that dam, you never did it in a council meeting, it was not done at a Parks and Rec meeting, it was never publicly decided to put that into the plan. It just appeared out of nowhere. Who did that? Who did that? It's not her job, it is not her job to decide what she wants to add, like wording about the shed on page, I believe it was page fourteen, that was never discussed by the Parks and Rec. It just poof, appeared out of nowhere. New wording about a shed, new wording about, uh, well, the safe routes to schools, that was also, there's no meeting that has declared, we want to add safe routes to schools into it. She's adding stuff to a plan that you just approved after I already warned you I was concerned about it, and you all approved it, every one of you did. And lastly, it was also pointed out about, um, why somebody might be removed from a board. I'm sorry I had to do this, but Mr. Horton has never attended a Parks and Rec meeting, ever.
Wait, I told you I was not...
I'm sorry, it's my turn to speak. He has never attended, and I would like you to take that into consideration, it's written in there, he needs to either be removed or dismiss himself from it.
I dismiss myself.
His name's still on the plan, he did not dismiss himself. His name's on the plan you approved. All of you approved it with his name on it as a matter.
Anybody else?
I'd like to answer one question. I have four pieces of equipment to move some, plus a backhoe, plus a tractor with the floor on it, so I actually have six pieces of equipment to, to operate.
So how many hours does it take?
Like I said before, each event is different.
You should know.
And I don't know, you tell me how much snow I'm going to get, and I'll give you an answer.
The county knows, and they have a lot more stuff.
They say they know, man, but the thing of it is, if you check the county, they might tell you it takes thirty hours.
This is colorful comments, please, you're out of work. I will address some of the things that I have here, uh, oh, God, where do you start? The idea of the, uh, the hard drives, I, I did answer that, and I did answer that a long time ago, I'm not going back down that road. I'm not going to take and change minutes in meetings, and I went, went a long way through that. When we go forward with what we are doing, there will be things in there about the, the electronic age that we live in. Uh, let's see, I heard what I'm talking about.
Are you talking theft?
I'm not going down any road from what happened yesterday. I have no intentions of opening that up, because if we do that...
But that's for the future.
I'm out of work, this is my turn to talk, I didn't necessarily feel like taking that to interrupt me, okay? This is how this procedure works, it's a meeting. Uh, let's see, what else do we have? Miss Sam, I, I do have some information that I can give you, I, I didn't bring with me, I had it for the last meeting. I will take and get you some of that information that I have, uh...
As far as what?
The council members and stuff that are appointed and whether or not for disciplinary action. And I guess really, you know, I know that Mr. McKenna touched on, but you could look up what happened in Flint as far as, you know, those.
I can look up a lot of things, but you said.
And there's, well, I mean, that's news that you should know what happened and the outcome of it, so there's not enough left that can be done, so. DPW worker, I guess we kind of went over that, haven't we? How we're going to do it, how we're going to do it. The actual hours for the workers, I have been getting in my mailbox a list of what has happened with the daily activities of the workers. And I have talked to Ethan about being a little more explicit with what the guys are doing at times because it's kind of vague in general. With that said, in the past, I went to Davison and I also went to Burton, I went to Ardenville. And those guys, how they do things, it's not a lot different than what is happening here. How the guys operate and the records they keep of their employees, they're kind of vague. Right around are different, that's how it is. I have talked to Ethan and some things that I would like to have you change. Hopefully that will satisfy some of the things, we get a better idea. I guess with that, you know.
The next, the next.
That's about it. I can talk to you afterwards, I'll talk to you.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn.
I, I didn't hear you say it was close.
That's it. I'm making a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion with your.
Court. I'll talk to you anytime.
You wanted our camera though. You do. The best time that we go.